Call the council meeting to order. Invocation by Ms. Lynette Cook and pleasure legion by Ms. Liz Ebert.
We come today to bow our heads and open this meeting in prayer. We ask that you would bless our time together today. May we grasp those things that you want us to understand and may our hearts always be ready to respond to you and your wisdom. We also ask that you keep our community and its citizens safe. We pray these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Cook and Ms. Ebert. We welcome you to city council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I would like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the blue form or call into 291-8428. That's 291-8428 to submit your information to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistant is available if needed. Item for submission to the council should be handed to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle. Well, now she's at the end. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The five-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence all phones and electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolutions and not by Robert rules of order. All documents with reference to meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement in boards or commission. If interested, please call 291-8800, 291-8800. If you call 337-291-8428, prior to reading of items, you will be contacted to speak during the public comment portion of the agenda item for which you sign to speak. Item number 10, discussion item, Alfred Mouton statue. This item has been withdrawn from the agenda prior per author Councilmember Glenn Lazar. Item number 50, CO-064-2020, short-term rental code intro item, pulled from ingloble list at the request of Councilmember Andy Nakim. I would like to wish a happy birthday to Fire Chief Robert Benoit, who will celebrate his birthday on July 11. I would also like to wish a happy birthday to City Councilmember Andy Nakim and City Council Administrator Secretary Selasina Cruz, which they will both celebrate on July 20. As City Council Chair, I do not have any announcements. Is there any council that has any announcements? I see there's none, no chair or council one. Executive Mayor President Report. Mr. President Mayor Gelleri, do you have any report to?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have nothing but the budget to actual comparison, which was submitted to the council before the meeting. If you have any questions, Director Toupes is available.
Any questions? You see, there's none. Resolutions moving forward. This is a public hearing. Blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the councils. The five-minute rule does apply. Cindy, please read item number five.
City Resolution 21-2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development sponsored public transportation agency safety plan and establishing safety performance targets for the Lafayette Transit System.
I need a motion to second. Motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Ms. Lynette Cook. Any council discussion? No discussion, any public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the resolution.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Cindy, please read.
City Resolution 22-2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council providing for the giving of a notice of intention to establish, acquire, construct, improve, extend, and maintain a sewer system within a portion of Consolidated Sewerage District of the City of Lafayette, State of Louisiana, describing in a general way the improvements contemplated and the manner of payment therefore, providing for the hearing of any objections to the proposed improvements and the manner of payment therefore, and providing for other matters in connection therewith.
Motion by Mr. Andy Nakim, second by Ms. Liz Ebert. Council discussion? There's none, public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from council to adopt the resolution.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Please read item number seven.
City Resolution 23-2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving water service outside of the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette in accordance with ordinance 30-2015 LPUA 128 and 132B, Nelrose Street.
Motion second. Motion by Ms. Lynette Cook, second by Mr. Glenn Lazar. Council discussion. Mr. Lazar.
I noticed that this is conditioned on the property being annexed into the city. We have an, what's the status of the annexation? Whoever can answer it, I mean.
I think, are you the property owner? Okay, you can come up and introduce yourself. He didn't sign in, he didn't think he needed to speak, but since he has a question.
No problem.
That's okay.
Okay, hold on one second, please. I need you to identify yourself, name.
First name is Xavi Morris Short. I bought this property to develop it. It was never subplatted, but it was directed to be a small community for mobile homes. I went in front of the city and platted it as four lots. It was approved for sewer systems and culverts and so forth. I've developed it, I'm down to the fourth lot. It had two water meters there. I have three now. They said they made an accident on one. One of my tenants went in and required for a water meter, and they put the third one, and they said it was a mistake. I'm asking that they make that same mistake again, because I feel like they're picking and choosing. These people, I'm trying to supply a good, clean residence for these people to live, and it's a Lafayette parish, but I have a water line that runs directly on my side. There's no bores. It's just a direct tap. All we're asking is to allow, y'all allow us to put one more water meter there.
Okay, so you see, you have a water line running from your property?
Directly.
A city water line?
Yes, sir.
Running, right, okay.
Can you tell us where we are with that? Yes, Bryan Guidry, Chief Civil Engineer at LUS. In 2018, we came before the LPUA, and we presented similar ordinance. And it was approved, but on the condition that the property annexes into the city. So the owner doesn't want to annex into the city because he wouldn't be able to put mobile homes on the lots. So, and so it's been two years. And the property, that whole strip of property all along the road, Nelrose Street, has an LUS water line along that whole road. So it was platted in 1950. And so I don't know exactly when the water line was constructed. It's fairly old, but probably not in 1950, but shortly after. So the intent of the water line was to serve those residents, they're in the incorporated area of the parish. So anyway, a lot of those trailers that were already there are already served by LUS water. They already have water meters. But we came before the board in 2018, when he was ready to develop two more lots. They were undeveloped. He wanted to put trailers on those two lots. And the LPUA said, yes, but you have to annex. So now we're, I guess, trying it again to see if there's an approval on the ordinance without having to annex, because he wants to put mobile homes in. He wouldn't be able to put the mobile homes if he's in the city. And he's already, he already has, I think, both mobile homes set up.
I guess, so it's four lots it was divided into, and there's one, this is actually a modular home, it's a double Y, but the other ones are mobile homes there.
And one of, the two newer ones, one of the new ones came in, I think it was around in January-ish, the tenants came in to get a water meter, and LUS provided a water meter. They, you know, they paid their fee. I guess they noticed everybody else along that road had LUS meters and didn't realize that there was an ordinance saying that they could only get the meter if they annexed. And so it was an erroneous, you know, mistake on LUS's part. This time, when they came in for the subsequent meter on the other lot, somebody at customer service said, oh, there's a flag here that says that you can't, you have to annex, or something to that effect. And that's what triggered this whole, you know, and that's basically why we're coming back again, too, is, you know, we already have one that, we don't want to take the meter back, they already have somebody living in it. So we want to make it right, whichever way it is, but we don't want to evict someone, obviously. But we can't, but we do have an ordinance, a 2018 ordinance, says that we can only serve it if they annex, so.
Ms. Cook?
Of course, we have that ordinance, but we have often given water outside the city, you just pay twice. You pay twice. You're paying, you're paying a higher fee for water probably than if you would if you were in the city.
Exactly. All the fees.
And we've done that several times. So if, yeah, if we make him annex, then again, you can't, he wouldn't be able to have his, you wouldn't be able to have what you have on the property now, so.
Correct.
I'm just trying to get it clear in my head. So basically, what you're asking for is just water. You're just asking for the water service, which is already there.
A water meter to be put in there, yes.
Right, okay.
Or allow me to put one.
Allow the water there, okay. And paying at the higher rate, as, out of city rate?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Whatever it takes.
That's, I just need to clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, I think, it'll be okay. Ms. Lazar, you okay with it? Okay. Okay, I need a vote from the council to adopt this resolution.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yeah.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate the help. Have a good evening.
Cindy, please read item number eight.
City Resolution 24-2020, a resolution of the Lafayette City Council approving water service outside of the corporate limits of the City of Lafayette in accordance with ordinance 30-2015 LPUA 150 Burden Road.
Motion to second. Motion by Ms. Liz Ebert, second by Mr. Andy Nakim. Council discussion? Any public comments?
No, sir.
Vote from the council to adopt the resolution.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Report and/or discussion items. Old federal courthouse redevelopment, Mr. Lazar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is basically just to get an update on the, on the development.
So is anyone here prepared to talk about this? Oh, that's no problem.
Old federal courthouse. Thank you for bringing this item up. I think we have some downtown representatives here that they may be able to add to it more than I can, but I will say this. Our CAO and myself and a couple members of the administration did go and tour the premises the other day, saw demolition, very excited to see that. There are deadlines in the contract, and, you know, whether the developer's going to meet that or not, he can, he can opine on that. I think he might come and discuss. I think he's available in August or September, August. So we might want to bring this item up again here in the next couple of months. But the contract that's in place does address those potential delays. And I'm just, I know this, as, again, as a resident, very excited to see this blighted property being addressed, very excited about the prospect of the project, and, you know, this is, this is a good thing for Lafayette, so very happy about it. I wish I had more to, you know, add to that.
Yeah, I thought the Public Works Director was going to chime in, but it's okay.
Public Works?
So, Mr. Lazar, from understanding, if I'm understanding, that you're asking for an update on this. So are you satisfied with your hearing, or you want, you'd like to know more?
Well, it's, put it on the agenda really, because I was just kind of noticing where we were as far as the timeline, and the project was scheduled to be completed on December 31st of this year, and obviously, that's not going to happen. So I just wanted to get some update as to where we were in terms of progress.
Sure, so just to remind us, it is a private development, so I don't, I don't know how extensive Public Works develop, or, you know, participation would be. Do we have any, do we have a DDA member? Do we have any other DDA members or downtown?
They do have people signed in, or one person signed in from DDA.
Because I think I know the, and I appreciate, I believe I know the intent behind, behind the request. I'm trying to satisfy, I'm just, I can only give you what I, what I have.
No, that's fine. You said someone signed in to speak on the issue?
Yes, sir.
Let's go ahead and call.
You ready for speakers?
Yes.
Next speaker is Miles Mott.
And Madam Clerk, if the councilman would like, our CAO does have a little, little info if you, if you'd like.
Yeah, I signed in to speak, but I'll wait that.
If you have information that you would like to provide with reference to the project, you're welcome to come up.
Question perhaps by Mr. Lazar.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Cedrin.
And Councilmember Lazar, just to clarify, per your request, I did coordinate with Public Works Director Chad Nava, and he didn't have any updates, because as, you know, we know it is a private development. However, I did reach out and I did speak to the developer. He was out of town.
I know.
On holiday, and he didn't have any updates, but as the mayor president indicated, he did have a commitment that he was looking forward to coming forth to council in August and giving us an update at that time. So I did reach out to the developer and didn't get any further than what we're delivering to you this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Cedrin, I appreciate that.
Certainly.
I do have one other concern. Heard some rumors, and I want to emphasize rumors. I'm not sure if this is valid or not, but I think it's something that needs to be, that the council needs to be aware of. Some rumors that there are plans to convert the development to all residential. You have any knowledge of that, or any? Yes, sir.
Okay. I can add to that in full transparency. There's been no formal proposal, but I welcome any ideas that anybody has to better downtown or the better the city or parish of Lafayette, but honest answers, I don't have any proposals, but I welcome them to anybody, anybody out there. If you have a good idea, bring it up, bring it up. I will say this, I understand the parameters of the contract, and it does not call for complete residential, so any changes, I mean, there would have to be a strong justification to do that. And of course, we would let the councils know any progress or anything that's been added, but nothing formal has been submitted as of yet. But there are, there are, I have heard that idea float around. I'm still waiting to see a proposal.
So no one submitted anything formal or official?
No, not that I know of.
To us yet?
No.
But, but that rumor is floating around?
I can confirm, I've heard that rumor, and I can confirm that I haven't had a formal proposal presented to me, and I will confirm that I welcome any ideas.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to call up Mr. Miles Mott now, if he's available.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mott. Could you please state your name and your position, if you will?
Sure, my name is Miles Mott, and I'm the chairman of the Downtown Development Authority.
Do you have any information on this topic that you would like to bring forward?
Actually, I can basically reiterate what the mayor president said, but we did get approached at the DDA with a potential proposal to convert it from a mixed use to 100% residential. And our CEO and I have met with Mr. Crampy to discuss that, and he pretty much confirmed that they were, they had some plans in the works to do that, and we requested that he do what he could to preserve as much of the mixed use as possible. And I think he agreed to revisit that. I don't think that it's, they've made a final decision yet, and so we're kind of in a holding mode. Actually, we, we're just promoting the development of downtown. We're not a party to this agreement, as is the city council and the developers, and we want to see downtown flourish. And until someone brings a concrete, number one, proposed change to us, and number two, a request by the mayor president or the council for our input, I mean, we're just going to stand still.
Okay. That's fine.
Any other questions?
No, that's fine. Thank you.
But your presence helps, so I appreciate, I mean, you're downtown, you know, if you have any insight, I think, I think we all agree that the council has a good, has good questions, and we should, we should get those answers, and I'm glad we can at least confirm that there is a rumor floating around, so that's good, you know?
Yeah, thank you, Miles. Appreciate it.
Hold on one second, Mr. Miles. Ms. Cook? Oh, I'm sorry, you finished, Mr. Lazar?
I just have a question, and I'm so excited we're doing this development, too. I wouldn't, I am in full, you know, favor of it. I guess my concern is if we do change the original, if there's a contract and we modify it, does that make the whole thing, we don't have to go back to the whole bid process and start all over again, do we? I mean.
No, that's a fair question. It's my understanding legal can override me, but there are parameters in the contract that allow for deviations. I believe the mayor president's office, myself, can make those decisions, but there has to be certain deviances that have to be made, I think 10% or whatnot. It's in the contract. But again, I just want everyone to know, any change to that contract, which I thought was extremely well, you know, very well negotiated, very good for Lafayette, very good for the, for the developer, any changes to that, there would be some, there would have to be some strong justification for that, whether we're going residential, the developer, I would imagine, would understand, and he's a good guy, and he's doing great things for our community, even in this project, great things for this community. There would have to be some, some significant, significant justification.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I don't want to get us in trouble, so that's all I'm asking for.
And my side job is practicing law, so.
You practice law? Figure you can help us out, yeah.
I looked, I looked at the contract also, and I agree, there is some, the contract does address the change in the mixed use equation.
Okay.
And it spelled out very clearly.
Perfect. That's, that's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lazar, you still have the floor.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't get boxed in.
Sure.
If you will. Neither the administration nor the council, that we didn't get boxed in at the last minute. And if there, that there, if there are plans to convert it to all residential, that we didn't get so far along, I would hope that the developers would give us the courtesy of submitting that to us in a timely fashion, so that we could have adequate time to discuss it and make the appropriate decisions, and not get boxed in at the last minute. Just a concern I have.
Sure, and I think, again, I think it's a very fair concern. My, my understanding of the contract is, again, I think it was extremely well negotiated on both sides, and I believe there are protections in place that would protect us in that. For example, if the developer would unilaterally make those decisions, and then it wasn't approved, then the burden's on the developer. I mean, he would, he would bear all the costs to reconfigure it to not be fully residential. I don't think there's any incentive for him to do that, and the, the only, I don't, I don't even tell the developer that, but if he's watching, he can, and he's, again, he's a great guy, he's doing great things. Any deviation, you know, please come with some significant justification. That's the best way I can say it.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you, Miles. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, let's move along. A reminder that item number 10 has been withdrawn per author, Mr. Glenn Lazar. Item number 11, COVID-19 emergency response, Mr. Glenn Lazar?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mayor, thanks for providing us with this, but it, in all honesty, it really wasn't necessary. We, we know and certainly appreciate all that the administration has done in guiding us through this crisis thus far. No one questions your intent and the intent of the administration in terms of how we've gotten to this point and how we've handled this crisis thus far. So my, my concern had more to do with what we do going forward.
Sure.
And when this was initially placed on the agenda Friday before last, because we have a 12 o'clock deadline, 10 days before the meeting to put something on the agenda, so it was a rush to put it on the agenda, and that was at the time we were starting to see the spike in cases, and see that we were going in the wrong direction, if you will. And I'm not going to sit up here and cite all the stats and all that has occurred over that period. I'm sure your office, you get daily updates from the Department of Health on that, so. So here we are today, and the question is, what do we do going forward? Doesn't seem as though things are going to improve anytime soon. The numbers continue to tread in the wrong direction, if you will. They appear to anyway, okay? Appears to continue to tread in the wrong direction, and not going to, not a predictor or anything of that sort, but I can only imagine that after the long 4th of July holiday weekend, that it's going to continue to tread in that direction for the foreseeable future. So I have some, some concerns as to what we do going forward, and whether or not we are doing everything within our powers to help slow the spread. Everything that we've talked about tonight thus far, in some way or another, came back to economic development. And the only way that we're going to get the economy fully open and keep it open is to slow the spread and stop, you know, some kind of way. But it's more than economic development. It's also getting the schools reopened. And one of the things that we did some time ago was part of the, one of the ordinances you passed requiring employees that deal with the public to wear masks, to protect the public. The flip side of the coin is, what are we doing to protect the employees from the cashiers at grocery stores and what have you, first responders, healthcare workers? And I can tell you that my conversations with them, and obviously, because of my medical condition, I have a lot of conversations with healthcare personnel. And it's not a position I choose to be in, but, you know, making the best of it. And I just happened to be at Lafayette General last Wednesday when the National Guard did their flyover in tribute to healthcare workers. I was able to step outside along with a few of the nurses to witness it, and the question that was presented to me at that time, and it's reoccurring really, is why don't we require masks to be worn in public? Didn't have an answer. Certainly, I think it's a good idea. I endorse it, and I would strongly recommend that you consider passing such an ordinance, not an ordinance, but executive order, if you will. I think it's something that's long past due, considering the position we find ourselves It's not very comforting to be watching TV and we see a flash on the screen, Lafayette being, you know, ranked where it's at as we speak. And like I said, for all of the aforementioned reasons, I'm strongly encouraging and requesting that you, that you consider doing that. When I initially put this agenda item, like I said, it was to, it was to open up the discussion and have the discussion as to whether or not we're doing everything we can as a community to protect our citizens, especially the most vulnerable. I know some people that. I know some people that, that haven't left their house in four months because they're scared to go out. They're scared to go out. And we need to do everything we can to get past that, to make our citizens feel comfortable, re-engaging. And it's, it's been well documented and proven that the best way to stop the spread is to, to require some type of face mask or facial coverings when people are publicly interacting with each other. So I will tender, if any other council members have anything to say.
Sure.
Any other discussion? Ms., Ms. Cook?
I'd just, I'd just like to chime in too on that. I, I agree that, you know, I'm not sure that the mask is gonna get rid of the COVID in the community, but I, I do think that there are some, it, you know, it adds an extra layer of protection. As a teacher, I want to see our kids get back to school. They need to get back to school. We need to keep businesses open. We need to keep, get the community back as normal as we can moving forward. And if wearing a mask in public places can help that, slow the spread, I think it's something we should, we should look at. Like I said, we ask, like Glenn said, we ask our, all the employees in, in public spaces, businesses, to wear a mask eight hours. And so we're going into those stores and we should at least, I mean, we're not in the store for eight hours. Yeah, they're uncomfortable to wear. Do we like wearing them? No. But if I'm going into a grocery store, I wear mine so that I show respect to the people that are working in the stores who have to wear them for their eight hour shift. So I think it's something that if we, you know, think about, think about it as doing it for others, not necessarily for ourselves. And if we can slow the spread down just a little bit, you know, it, it's worth a shot. I mean, we're not, seem to be going in the right direction at this point. So I feel like this is something that I would, I would like to ask you to look at as well. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any more council discussion? No, no public comments, I guess, huh?
Public comment. We did have two citizens who did not wish to speak. They called in in support of requiring that mask be worn in public. We do have one speaker, Mr. Daniel Jaeger. Mr. Jaeger? You may begin speaking.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. This last week, COVID-19 became a lot more personal to me. After last week, COVID-19 is no longer about the number of changes or latest statistics or something that happens to someone else. Last week, I lost a very good friend to COVID-19. Lafayette was one of the happiest cities in the USA. And this friend was one of those people who knows how to make people happy. Not just me, but everyone who came into contact with me. Now, I owe a lot of people your cheerful voice, see a smile, share a laugh with them. It's a lot of love, it's not just me, and it's family and friends that live in the city of Lafayette. COVID-19 is a very sneaky disease. Anyone of you listening to my voice, but I have COVID-19, and I know it. It is a very scary disease. You can be spreading it from your area to someone's brain or a family. People say, people should stay home. They are scared of it. And some people are able to stay home. I'm one of them. I have some medical issues that put me at risk. Because I'm tired, I could make that decision to stay home. But many people can't stay home. They have to report to their relatives or families. And when other people come unmasked to their workloads, they put those workers in a list. If their workers get sick, they can't work, and they can't afford to do that. My employee can't work if it's business. If it's our city, it's our country. So, if you're one of those people who is scared of wearing a mask, please think about the people in the business here in the happiest cities that you may be putting at risk. Wearing a mask is something that you can do.
To keep people healthy.
And it is this plan. And it may well save the life of your, your or someone else's good friend. That's how I said it, so Lafayette, we can all work together to mitigate the devastating effects of COVID-19. I want to thank the mayor, President Josh Guillory, and the members of the council for allowing me to share my story. Josh Guillory, I asked, did you make the withdrawal or did you issue an executive order mandating the wearing of masks from home? Do we have a better way of protecting Lafayette and citizens and businesses? Because I know that I have a promise of complete message to this world. The public creates if they hear this. But that isn't stopping before, so here goes. My message today is to hold me clear. Let's all protect what we hold dear. Just commit to taking on one simple task when out in Lafayette, putting on the mask. Thank you very much, I love you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
Okay, let's move along.
Thank you, sir.
Ordinance for final adoption.
Do you want me to reply?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
All right. Now, the, the easy political answer would be, Guillory, be quiet. But we're not here, well, we're not here to do politics. We're here to do policy and to take care of people. And to that, to the caller that just called in, I think I can say for everyone, you know, we, we share in your pain. I mean, you're, like you said, Lafayette recently voted, quite often voted, happiest city in America. And this poor gentleman cannot hear that happy voice and the voice of his friend for, again, and that's sad. I take every single case, every single case, every fatality extremely personal, extremely personal. So, got a couple of thoughts. First, to the council and anyone in the public that wants a copy of this, please email, reach out to Jamie Angell. It's J-A-N-G-E-L-L-E@LafayetteLA.gov. Good. Or Facebook us, 311 us, reach out to, reach out to my office. Then, did y'all get, Mr. Lazard, you, you were pointing to this. Okay, you got that part. And then Carlos, I think, thank you, also has an addendum. Did y'all get this part?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So anybody out there that wants a, a copy of this, of, of what has been done, our staff has worked very, very quickly and efficiently to put that together. And, and I think it was important, just so everybody knows. All right. Have a few thoughts, though. Very valid points. Councilman Lazard, I want to thank you. It wasn't, but what, 10, 12 days ago that, that we talked, you know, messaged each other back and forth, talked about the, the trend. And a lot of our council members expressed some concern. I appreciate that. This, this new second wave is apparently hitting our younger generation, our younger population a lot more, a lot harder. You know, the, the experts, at least on our medical task force, say 18 to 29, but really, it's about 18 years old to 25 years old, is the feedback that I'm getting. So just, I think knowledge is power, so you should know that. So in response to that, we tried to, we tried to address that demographic since that, that's, that's the current wave. So issued executive orders, a couple of them. I was real busy the other weekend. We eliminated loitering downtown for a two-week period. Our legal team worked very tirelessly to get that, that language together. We're taking that on a day-to-day basis. It's likely to be extended, but we haven't made that decision yet. So eliminating loitering downtown. The reason for that is, I get the pictures, just like a lot of you do. My officers give me reports. LPD does a great job. Fire, fire department does a great job of giving some reconnaissance, giving some feedback. And the, the images that I saw were very alarming. And then when you look at the, meaning, a lot of crowded areas, one night was over 1,000 of our younger, younger members of our community, all gathered on Jefferson Street, all gathered in that downtown area. So eliminating loitering downtown, adding a curfew for unaccompanied minors was reinstated. We had that right in the initial fight for about a month, month and a half, but we felt it was important in conjunction with our medical task force. Also, a strong, a strong recommendation from our medical task force was to limit pu- public gatherings. So we also did this for no more, and this is still in effect, no more than 200, a 200-person limit for public gatherings. We carved out some exceptions that were justified. Our churches are exempt. They're under Phase II guidelines with the state. And there's a couple of other examples or exceptions due to the compliance mechanisms that they have in place. Also, we increased compliance checks. We have both our, our chief of police and chief of fire here today. And any businesses out there, you know, look, we need you in this fight. This is not a time to go rogue. The, what the, the points that the councilmen, council members noted, the, the points that the gentlemen that called in, those are significant and they're very serious. So any business owners out there, take this serious. There's a lot of businesses that were issued warnings. If you've been issued a warning, and we're doing everything we can to keep everybody in compliance, to give you the resources that you need, mask, working within conjunction with LIDA to, to distribute masks, dispose, reusable mask if we need them. But if you've been issued a warning and our compliance checks teams come to you, we, we will issue a citation if there's another violation. If it's serious enough, we'll take the mechanism or take the procedures that we need to take in place. But we take enforcement very serious, very serious. Let's see. In regards to rankings, so no one can debate our ranking right now, if you want to use that, that word, ranking. It's not very pleasant to look at right now. We are, we are in a serious situation here, a significantly serious public health emergency. And we're right in the heat of it. Now, if you look back a month and a half, two months ago, Lafayette was looking beautiful compared to other counties and parishes in the country. I don't know what that means for two or three months from now, because I'm not a medical expert. But I do listen to our task force. So I don't know how to assess that other than I know we can't control that, but we can control what we do going forward. So these compliance checks are very serious. But I'm gonna tell you, and I wholeheartedly believe this, no government regulation, no enforcement action that the administration does, no ordinance that is passed, no emergency declaration is as effective as you and I. But we can't just have that as a slogan. We can't just say, okay, good, personal responsibility, check it and move on. We have to enforce it. If you can't social distance, wear a mask. If you can't social distance, wear a mask. Wash your hands, increase personal hygiene. And, and we're doing that and we're gonna get through this. But to all of our parents out there and our grandparents, remember that statistic I just, just gave. Remember that demographic I just announced? 18 to 25, 18 to 29, that younger, the younger members of our community, you know, rethink allowing them to go play basketball for three or four hours at a time. Consider putting our own mechanisms in place at home. That's where it starts. This is real. For any doubters out there, just look at the statistics. This is a real virus. This is a serious situation. But we'll get through it. In regards to masks for the public, I appreciate that. I appreciate the, the, the rally cry and I understand that. And I'm gonna say this, and I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, but with freedom comes risks. And I might sit in and say, he doesn't care. I, I care. I care greatly. But I also care about liberty and I also care about freedom. And every time I issue one of these declarations, loitering downtown, unaccompanied minors, curfew, 200-person limit, I am infringing on your liberties. I take that also extremely serious. And for me to just, for me to infringe on your liberties, it has to be justified. So I'm basing all the information I'm getting on the medical task force, looking at the situation. I would not be justified in requiring a parish-wide mask order. And that's my position. Now, employers, again, I come to you, there is no rule against employers requiring masks for your patrons and for your employees. It's already a statewide order and a local order that if your employees are dealing with the public, you're required to wear a mask. Our compliance checks will be beefed up. There's a lot of communications between the fire department and the police department. But employers, I, I'm, I can't ask you strong enough to be a member in this fight. And, and we're doing, you know, I go around the community just like everyone else. More people are complying than not, but there are a few that are out there, probably more than a few. So if you're one of those, let's be a team player here. Let's, let's take this serious. And we have enforcement mechanisms, mechanisms in place to make sure there's compliance. So, but this may look as if it's gloomy times in Lafayette. I don't think it's gloomy. I think it's serious. And I think everyone here, if you took the time to come to a council meeting, I know you take all this serious and I appreciate you, okay? I really, I really do. But everybody listening out there, look, we will get through this, but let's minimize the casualties. Because this is a war. This is a war against an invincible, invincible enemy, a deadly enemy. But it's, and it's, and it's a war of attrition, you know? Complacency is our biggest enemy. Complacency, when you think it's over, it's not. We, they, look, a lot of people thought it was over. A lot of people are done with COVID. They're over COVID. I get it. Trust me, I'm over COVID too. I've been battling since March 18th and actually before, March 9th. But I'm not over the duty that I have to the people. And I will never, ever, ever let that go lightly in my mind or my heart. So, those are my thoughts. Again, I, I, you know, implore everyone, if you want a copy of our response so far, we have two documents that you're more than welcome to email Jamie Angell in my office. He can get you a copy of that. And just, I appreciate everyone's teamwork in this fight. We will get through this. We, it's, it's more than a slogan, what I'm about to say. Lafayette Strong, okay? This is, we're not new to natural disasters. This is just a new type of natural disaster. It's one where you can't just recharge the batteries, get your water out of the, wherever you store it, you know, get your food. It's longer than that, you know? But we will get through it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Nocken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor President Guillory, you, you have on this testing locations.
Yeah.
I think that's important, people realize that. There are seven testing sites still, and I'm sure they can find them on the website. The protocol is still the same. In other words, you call in to test for symptoms to see if you need to go get tested. Is that still all the same, the protocol?
There is. And Carlos, do you mind coming up? Because this, I'm glad, Councilman, I'm glad you brought this up. There are a couple of sites and these, these sites tend to, not only are they mobile, but they move as well. So Carlos is the, the leader of our health equity task force and he probably can provide a lot more, excuse me, insight.
I think this is important and it's clear to the public.
Absolutely.
What they need to do, how to do it, when to do it. And, and because not only do you have to protect themselves, but they have to protect the people they go to get tested at.
That's right.
In case they are positive. Don't go to the hospital. That much I, I understand. You don't just go to the hospital because you feel sick. That's not the way to do it. But thank you, Mr. Carlos. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Nocken, and to the council. Mayor President Guillory and the team, we've been working very hard to ramp up testing, particularly in districts one and district five, city and parish where the hotspots are. And so we've partnered with Northside Community Healthcare Clinic. It's a mobile unit. Ms. Doty Lamont and her team. And they partner with nurses from Louisiana Department of Health. Every Tuesday, they're at the Martin Luther King Center where there's a food distribution with the 3:00 Project. We're so grateful to Mr. Lester Washington from Super One Foods on Willow Street. Every, every Thursday, the Louisiana Army National Guard, LDH, and the nurses that partner with them give free testing. So those who go in to get their groceries, there's a drive-through testing at Super One Foods on West Willow Street.
Thursdays only?
I'm sorry?
On Thursdays only?
Thursdays only, yes. There is daily testing at SW LA on 500 Patterson Street, and I believe that's in district one, I believe. We do have daily testing at the Total Wellness Group on Maustreet. That's in district five. And we, and as the mayor was speaking, we, we do have to take responsibility, all of us. We, we do have influence over people. And one pastor comes to mind, Bishop Anthony Gatlin. He lost his mother on Palm Sunday to COVID-19. And he was doing parking prayer. His church could not gather in the sanctuary, so they would pull up into the parking lot. And because he had a partnership with SW LA and nurses in the community, he started testing his own congregation. And one Sunday after church, tested 70 members. And he's been doing that every Sunday since. So we, we, we've been reaching out to faith leaders and people of influence to say, yes, make sure the people that you care about get tested. And what we're hearing is that when people show up to get tested, Mr. Nocken, as you said, they don't have masks. So we're making an appeal to the community that, you know, we, through our Safe Shop program, we were giving out masks to workers. But going back to my car, at Super One, a lot of people shopping there saying, hey, do you have a mask? And I, I gave them a mask. And so what we know are that there are people that need to get, they want the mask, but aren't sure how or where to get them. So we're grateful to Ryan Schumacher, I, I mean, Ryan DiMaggio with the Schumacher Foundation. They've donated and we're looking for more donations for masks. So if there's anybody out there that can help us at these testing sites, people are driving up without masks on and they're leaving with no masks. driving up without masks on, and they're leaving with no masks. So if they're positive, they're going to be spreading that. So we want to get them that PPE, that equipment, right there at the testing site, so that more people are wearing masks than not.
There was three other locations on there. The Karen Crowe Community Center, is that?
Oh, yes. Councilmember Brian Tabor from the Parish Council was instrumental in partnering with Doty Lamont, our mobile unit, and so we got that mobile unit up to the Karen Crowe Community Center, and they did one day of testing.
So that was just one day? That's not a regular thing then?
Not yet.
Okay, all right. And the Gethsemane Church of God and Christ, that's?
To my knowledge, that's every Sunday. Bishop Gatlin is doing that at his church.
For the congregants that go there. And then Dr. Patrick Moore, God bless him, he's helping out too, I see.
Oh, Dr. Moore, yes. He's working very closely with Dr. David Ali, and kudos to Dr. Ali. He is testing, he's right behind Cracker Barrel off of I-10.
And that's daily?
That's daily, yes.
Now, these test sites, are they charging for these tests?
All of these sites are free.
Free testing?
No charge.
All right. Now, they go there, do they get a screening before they're tested, is what happens basically?
You don't need screening.
You can just go there and ask for testing?
Just, exactly. You don't need an appointment, so.
Of course, wear your mask. If you're symptomatic, let them know.
Absolutely.
Very important that you do that.
Yep.
Public responsibility is important, the personal responsibility.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos Harvin. I appreciate it very much.
Sure.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, I can add a site as well. Council Nakken is kind of hot off the press a little bit, but a thanks to Mr. Kishban and also Dr. Ali. So you can add a site, if anybody's taking notes, 901 Wilson Street, 901 Wilson Street.
Oil Center.
That's an oil center. It's in the Ali Patalla Medical Center, and that's from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, that's the Ali Patalla Medical Center.
And that's free testing?
Free testing, so.
Excellent.
Free testing. We cut back on the budget and took out water.
Thank you to the heroes for stepping up. This is very important.
No, I appreciate it. No, I appreciate that. Thank you, Carlos. Thank you to the council, and you know, ain't no excuse, if you need a test, get out there. We gave several sites.
One other question. When they do these tests, what's the timeframe of getting them back? Are we talking two weeks, 10 days, seven days? Mr. Harvin, do you know?
Also, they're usually 24 to 48 hours.
So this quick testing, because I've had some complaints about people saying they're waiting seven, 10 days, still waiting on tests, the results, so. So within 24 hours usually, 24 to 48 hours.
30 hours.
I'll write that down and let people know. That's important, because I mean, they're stuck at home, wondering what's going on, you know? So thank you, gentlemen, for your time.
Thank you.
I yield the floor.
Mr. Lazar.
Mayor Gilroy, I would simply close by saying that I certainly respect your position, you know, and you're entitled to it, as we all are. But you mentioned that we're in a war, that this is a battle, and it stands to reason that when you're in a battle, that you would use every tool at your disposal. And it's, I understand the part about personal liberties. I respect that just as much as you do. But it just seems to me that we're not using the, what's been proven and documented, to be the best weapon to defeat this enemy. Thank you.
And Councilman, I'll say this, you know, I know a little bit about battle and close quarters and things like that. You know, you don't want to use an atomic bomb when an M16 works. Now, I don't doubt the efficacy of a mask. I know there's lots of debates out there. I'm not a medical doctor, so I tend to try to listen to the medical doctors, but my close will be, I fall back on the infringement of civil liberties, and with freedom does come risks, and if I'm going to infringe on a liberty, it must be justified, and I'm not at that point.
Let's move along. Ordinance for final adoption. This is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available. For anyone wishing to address the council, the five-minute rule does apply. Cindy, please read item number 12.
City Ordinance 532020, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 321 Macklin Street, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Rudolph P. Barra and Doris LaLanne Barra, care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed, to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare, and ordering the condemnation of same.
Motion in a second. Motion by Ms., second by Ms. Andy Nakken. Council discussion. See, there's none, public comments?
Yes, sir.
Vote for the council to adopt the ordinance.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 542020, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the South Gravity Sewer Upgrades Project a public necessity, and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary land, servitudes, easements, rights of way, and other property rights on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Motion in a second. Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion. See, there's none, public comments?
We did have one citizen who signed in, did not wish to speak in support of the ordinance. We do have one speaker, Cory Jack.
Good evening. Members of the City Council, Mayor President Gilroy, my name is Cory Jack. I am the manager of Chamber Affairs for Wana Kadiana. I come before you this evening to express 1A's support for this ordinance. Given the economic impacts of COVID-19, we realize local government will need to make difficult decisions about how to prioritize spending and cuts to balance the budget. We would, however, like to urge you to consider prioritizing investment in Lafayette's urban core as an opportunity to support our economic recovery and long-term resilience. Prioritizing investment within the urban core creates more efficient patterns of development, reduces infrastructure cost over time, and supports stronger neighborhoods and a more sustainable community. We've also learned from Wana Kadiana's Leadership Exchange trips to other thriving cities such as Greenville, Carolina, South Carolina, and Lexington, Kentucky, that a city's downtown can be a key driver for economic development. Downtowns are the hub of commercial, civic, and cultural activities, creating shared spaces where people want to be. Thanks to the density of development in downtowns, downtown properties typically contribute to the highest property tax revenue per acre of any area in a city. In particular, residential and mixed-use developments can play a major role in supporting an economically productive and vibrant downtown by creating a consistent flow of customers to restaurants, retail shops, and other businesses. One of the challenges facing residential and mixed-use development in downtown Lafayette, however, is the need for more sewer capacity. The good news is downtown Lafayette and their surrounding areas are seeing an uptick in housing units through several new projects recently completed or currently underway, including the Vermillion Lofts, Buchanan Heights Town Homes, Old Federal Courthouse, and Bottle Art Lofts. To build on this momentum, we must prioritize ensuring the necessary sewer infrastructure is in place to support additional development going forward. In that spirit, 1A supports this ordinance to advance the South Gravity Sewer Upgrades Project. This critical project will increase sewer capacity in our downtown and surrounding areas, which is urgently needed for further growth and revitalization. Strong cities and regions need strong urban cores, which help attract talent, create jobs, and return money to the tax base. We appreciate the support of the City Council in moving the South Gravity Sewer Upgrades forward and all the work of LCG and LUS on this critical project. These concludes my remarks this evening, and as always, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. Vote from the council to adopt the resolution.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved. City Ordinance 552020, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute the amendment number 3 to the Wholesale Water Agreement between the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and the City of Broussard, Louisiana.
Now, motion by Ms. Cook?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lazar. Council discussion. Ms. Seabair?
Who's here to speak on this? Would that be Ryan? Come on down. I was just hoping that maybe you can give us a little bit of backstory of how we've gotten to this point, why this is coming in front of us. I know we've had a long history with the City of Broussard and water, so I just wanted to have a little bit more information about it.
Yes, Brian Guidry, Chief Civil Engineer, LUS. The contract, the wholesale contract with the City of Broussard, anytime there's an amendment to the contract, we have to come to the City Council to get it approved. The service territory that's in the contract, the current contract, shows what Broussard is going to serve with their water system and what LUS is going to serve, well, what Broussard is going to serve with the LUS water that they purchase from us, and it's not going to get commingled together. It's going to be kept separated. What this ordinance does is change the territories a little bit. Broussard has a well that they've installed, a newer well, and they want to serve a certain area that currently is being served by LUS water. They also want to shut down their existing plant. It's old and requiring a lot of upgrades and stuff. Instead of putting their money into that, they want LUS to serve that area. So basically, we're trading areas. And it's a one-for-one trade-off. The area that LUS water is currently serving is about 13 million gallons per month, and so that's going to be taken away from LUS, and the area that LUS will be getting from the City of Broussard is about 14 million gallons a month. So it's basically an even trade.
All right, so we won't see a loss in revenue in that?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Well, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any public comments?
No, sir.
Vote on the council to adopt the ordinance.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
The motion to adopt is approved.
Announcements of vacancy on boards and commission. Ooh, that's a lot of vacancies. So anyone interested in being on a board, need to pay attention and listen. Cindy, please read.
Mr. Chair, I might add that as you listen up to all of these vacancies, if you are interested, please submit your resume, and she'll say that at the end, but I wanted you to have it up front, because she's going to read a lot. So as you listen in, resumes are due by noon Tuesday, July 21st. If you are interested or have questions, email BC Lafayette, that means boards and commissions, but BC Lafayette@LafayetteLA.gov.
Okay, Cindy. Ready? Want to have a drink of water first?
I got it.
You got it.
A vacancy will exist on the Hyman Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bustany Convention Center Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Hyman Performing Arts Center and Frem F. Bustany Convention Center Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. Advocates must be a minority as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 382233.2. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a one-year term. Advocates must be dieticians. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term. Advocates must be medical doctors. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term. Advocates must be mental health therapists. A vacancy will exist on the People's Safety Initiative Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. Advocates must be community organizers. A vacancy exists on the Lafayette Economic Development Authority Board as of August 4th, 2020, for three years, the remainder of an unexpired four-year term. Advocates must be black citizens. A vacancy will exist on the Bayou Vermillion District Board as of October 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of February 1st, 2019. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of February 1st, 2021. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Science Museum Advisory Board as of December 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Evangelion and Threeway Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Evangelion and Threeway Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Evangelion and Threeway Redevelopment Team as of January 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Evangelion and Threeway Redevelopment Team as of August 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Lafayette Water Works District North Board as of June 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term. Advocates must be district residents. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Water Works District South Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term. Advocates must be district residents. A vacancy will exist on the Caden Dome Commission as of September 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. A vacancy exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustment of July 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term. Advocates must be a minority as defined by Louisiana Revised Statute 382233.2. A vacancy exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustment of February 1st, 2020. This is a three-year term. This is an alternate position. A vacancy will exist on the Keep Lafayette Beautiful Board as of August 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Keep Lafayette Beautiful Board as of December 1st, 2020. This is a two-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Public Trust Financing Authority Board as of September 1st, 2020. This is a five-year term. A vacancy will exist on the Lafayette Airport Commission as of November 1st, 2020. This is a four-year term. Individuals wishing to submit a resume for the above voluntary vacancies must be a registered voter and a resident of Lafayette Parish. Yearly ethics training for all appointees is required as its financial disclosure under certain circumstances. Resumes are to be forwarded to Veronica L. Williams, Clerk of the Council, P.O. Box 4017-C, Lafayette, Louisiana 70502, or email to BC Lafayette@LafayetteLA.gov no later than noon Tuesday, July 21st, 2020, with appointments to be made at the August 4th, 2020, regular meeting of the Lafayette City Council.
Okay. Thanks, Cindy, for reading that so well, and I want to thank Jeremy, because he keeps up with all of these board and commissions. So he does a real good job of keeping up with all of these.
So, Madam Chair, there are some announcements somewhere else? They're posted, these vacancies?
Yes, sir. Good question. That is posted separate and a port on the website, under announcements, for everyone to see, and just to click on, it's not even the agenda, it's just boards and commission vacancies. So if you click on that, they'll all be listed. And keep in mind that there are city appointments for the city council to make in the city limits, and there are parish appointments, and all of those vacancies were announced earlier. So reach out to your respective board member, or city council member, or parish council member, if you're interested in a particular board.
Okay. Let's move along. Consider apartments by the city council as a whole to boards, commissions. Cindy, please read item 40.
Apartment of Andy Nakken to the Transportation Policy Commission, the governing body of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, for an indefinite term as of July 7th, 2020.
Council discussion. Public comments?
No, sir.
Let's call for vote.
District 3?
I'm kidding, yes.
District 4?
Why not?
District 4?
Yes.
District five?
I need to think about it. Uh, yes.
District one?
Why not?
District two?
Yes.
Andy Nokan is appointed.
Appointments by council members, mayor, president, and/or other direct appointments authority. Cindy, please read.
Nanette Cook, District Four, appointed Bobby Rishard to the Lafayette Advisory Commission on Crime Prevention for a four-years' term effective May 16th, 2020. Nanette Cook, District Four, appointed Judy Placer to the Lafayette Recreation Advisory Commission for a four-years' term effective March 1st, 2020.
Just about getting to you guys. Int introductory ordinance. I want to remind everyone that item number fifty has been pulled for a separate vote and discussion. I need a motion and a second from the council to introduce ordinance items forty-three through forty-nine in global. Move by Mr. Andy Nokan, second by Ms. Liz. Ebert? Okay, Cindy, please read.
City ordinance 572020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at public internet auction surplus vehicles, equipment, and other miscellaneous movable property which are no longer needed for public purposes as per the attached list auction. City ordinance 582020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating and capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to provide for adjustments of revenue and appropriation estimates. City ordinance 592020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council suspending ordinance 592019, the conditional 2% pay increase structure for the municipal, fire, and police civil service employees of the Lafayette Police Department for the proposed fiscal year twenty-one, 2021 budget as a result of the economic downturn due to the COVID-19 pandemic. City ordinance 602020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $27,481 received from the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement authorizing the transfer of matching funds and the amount of $9,160 from Fund 101 and appropriating within the Lafayette Police Department. City ordinance 612020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by transferring $150,000 from the office renovation space to account within the Lafayette Pub, Police Department to purchase mobile field force equipment. City ordinance 622020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 1920 operations and maintenance budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to make appropriations adjustments within the Communications Department. City ordinance 632020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the intersection improvements, Pinhook Road at University Avenue Project, a pilot necessity and authorizing acquisition of the necessary rights of way and movable property and other property rights requested to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary.
Okay, uh, any counsel discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Lazar.
Just some clarification on, on the, uh, Pinhook University Project, what that's going to entail. Someone from Warren still here or someone from public works, so? Hey, Warren.
Hey.
Thanks again. Uh, just some clarification as to what the Pinhook University Project is going to entail.
It's, uh, dual lefts from Pinhook Road to University Avenue from, uh, say, uh, eastbound to northbound, headed towards Johnson Street.
Okay, that's it?
That's the project. That's, it's an intersection improvement.
Okay.
It'll require some rideaway.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, that was counsel discussion. Any public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, I need a vote to introduce in global item forty-three through forty-nine.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The motion to introduce is approved.
Okay, Cindy, please read item fifty.
City ordinance 642020, in ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending Chapter 89, Section 89-21, used table enacting Section 89-77-1, short-term rental, and amending Chapter 89, Article 8, Section 89-151-1, general definitions of the Lafayette City Parish Code of Ordinances, the Unified Development Code, and to further refine and create supplemental regulations therein related to the use and operation of short-term rentals in the city of Lafayette.
I need a motion and a second. Motion by Mr. Glenn Lazar, second by Ms. Nanette Cook. Mr. Councilmember Andy Nokan, who pulled the item? Need to recognize him.
The reason I pulled the second. The reason I pulled the item is because I knew there was a lot of discussion that wanted to be had tonight by members of the audience. Uh, so I wanted to allow them time to speak to this, this introductory ordinance, sir.
Okay. Okay, before we get there, any counsel discussion? Okay, public comments?
We do have public comment on the item. First, we have those citizens who did not wish to speak, who emailed in to the council office on the email line, and eleven, uh, emailed in in opposition to it, one emailed in in support, and the emails are in your boxes for your review. Um, also, who did not wish to speak, blue chords for tonight. We received ninety in opposition, four in support.
Repeat that one more time, please? I, I didn't hear that.
We received, uh, do not speak, blue chords, ninety in opposition, four in support.
Okay.
Speakers, speakers for today. The first, uh, for blue chords, we have thirteen speakers, and if you still would like to speak, you can come up when your name is called. If you prefer to pass, then you could just say pass and we'll move on to the next speaker. Our first speaker is Andre Como, and Patrick Mould is next, but I wasn't sure if he wanted to speak or not because he checked off both. So, uh, Mr. Patrick Mould, you're up after him.
Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, President. My name is Andre Como. I live on Rose Lawn Boulevard. My wife and I also have investment property on Memory Lane that we list as short-term rental on Airbnb. It has been our joy to host numerous families from around the country and parts of the world to showcase the local hospitality and friendly Cajun culture that is unique to our hometown. We welcome the identification and registration of short-term rental properties in Lafayette so that the positive impact our businesses have on tourism, property values, and the tax base can be fully appreciated. The Unified Development Code Amendment, as originally prepared and presented by the administration's Development and Planning Department, is reasonable, measured. It is a conservative and appropriate first step in regulation of short-term rentals. For those of us who prefer to have less government rather than more government in our lives, this ordinance makes sense and we support it. However, one of the changes recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commissions on June 15, adding a requirement that short-term rentals in our residential RS1 zones be owner-occupied, is unwarranted and premature. The requirements of minimum one-night stay and prominent display of a certificate of occupancy are acceptable to us, and in fact, those are good ideas. But requiring owner-occupancy and any regulations beyond those presented by the department should not be considered until such time as the short-term rentals have been identified and monitored to determine if there is a need for such regulation, and if that need outweighs the enhanced cultural immersion offered to visitors of our city by many short-term rental properties. At the risk of offending some of my neighbors, I will say that there are owner-occupied and long-term rental properties where we live, and we would certainly gladly trade some of them for Airbnbs. One is a three-quarter house providing short-term housing for a variety of people working through drug rehabilitation. Those people come and go all the time. Another appears to be occupied by hoarders, and another is occupied by mechanic who works on everything except apparently his lawnmower. That's just how it is in my neighborhood, which is zoned residential RS1. In the neighborhood where we have our short-term rental, also residential RS1, the neighbors know what we are doing because we've met them and introduced ourselves and explained it. They appreciate how we have improved and maintained the property and how we manage the guests we are hosting. The complaints made June 15 at the commission meetings are the only ones we know of about Airbnbs in Lafayette. If there is a larger problem, we will all find out once the short-term rentals are identified, and that will be the right time to take further action if any of it is needed. In the meantime, we expect that you will hear possibly tonight, two weeks from tonight, and in the interim, fear that short-term rentals will bring drug use, prostitution, wild parties, traffic jams, lower property values, and bad people into our neighborhoods. We trust you will not act on those fears. We trust you will get the facts. If you are told the police are being called repeatedly, please talk to the police. If you are told that Airbnb is a wild west with no standards or controls, please ask for more information. We have plenty of it. There is no rush to regulate short-term rentals beyond what the department is drafting. There is no emergency here. Please take the conservative approach to this issue. Please enact the ordinance as recommended by the administration's Planning and Development Department without RS1 owner-occupancy or any additional requirements or restrictions until we all have a better understanding of the ways in which short-term rental businesses are serving our community or, or becoming a detriment to our community. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Patrick Mould, followed by Jean Longlinaz.
Well, that's a tough act to follow. I'll tell you that right now. Jesus, what, what he said, really, seriously. Thank you, Andre, for those eloquent words. Uh, I want to thank the, the council and the mayor, president, for the opportunity to, uh, speak and, and be as brief as possible. Uh, Airbnb owners throughout the city have provided each council member with a packet of information that I encourage you to take a look at. That will simply, and I encourage you to look over, what will simply spell out that an amendment to the zoning ordinance is not necessary at this particular time, as Mr. Andre Como so eloquently spoke about, and was simply a compromise for a dispute that one neighbor had with another. Nobody is disputing that we should have certificate of occupancies, that we should pay hotel motel tax, which I do, that we should pay sales tax, which I do. Simply put, that adding an amendment would require owner-occupancy would put some of these small businesses out of business, and they are small businesses. We follow Airbnb's stringent requirements when it comes to providing a safe, clean environment for a segment of the traveling population who prefer to stay at our style of lodging. To be successful in this business, you have to keep your place and business up to date from a decor, from, from decor and furnishing standpoint. Each guest that stays rates and reviews their stay. It's as simple as that. I strive with each and every guest who stay on my property to have a great stay and do everything in my power to assure that. Not only do I have a homeowner's policy, but I'm provided a $1 million general liability coverage from Airbnb. I provide fire extinguishers and smoke detectors. I contract with a management company who assists me with reservations and management of the property. I, I, excuse me, employ a lawn care service. I cut the grass. I clean, uh, I employ housekeepers who clean meticulously in between each stay and, and purchase some things as housewares, towels, sheets, and amenities to ensure my guests have the latest, greatest of what they need for an enjoyable stay, thereby stimulating the economy. I'm running a small business for short-term rentals as opposed to renting long-term, and I find it to be much more rewarding for me and my guests. Short-term renters pay on time, and they respect my property and they respect my neighborhood. Uh, my property has never been in as good a shape as it is from the time I started to rent the short, short-term rentals to now. So I would ask the council respectfully not to add an amendment that would restrict an Airbnb operating in the parish unless owner-occupied. It would, it would hurt so many small businesses in our community at a time where we need each and every one of them. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Ms., Madam Chair, one quick. Ms., uh, council lady has a question.
Yeah, the question is, when you said ninety opposed?
Yeah, they brought in a stack of blue chords.
I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify. They're opposed to Airbnbs in general? Are they opposed to regulations on Airbnbs?
Well, usually it's in reference to the ordinance. When they sign in, it's in reference to the ordinance, and, and they ask them, are you opposed to whatever you sign into?
I just wanted to clear that up. They're not opposed to Airbnbs, apparently, in terms of their response to the ordinance?
Yes, they, yeah, the ordinance, correct. Yes, ma'am.
Specifically, okay. That's, I just, I needed that. Thanks. Understand.
Thank you. Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. Next speaker is, and I don't know if it's Jean or Jeannie. It is Jean. It's J.E.A.N.N.E., so it's said both ways. Longlinaz, and she's followed by Kobe Longlinaz. Either one, yes, ma'am?
Hello, um, I wrote this down to...
What's your name, please?
My name is Jean Longlinaz. I live at 316 Myrtle Place here in Lafayette. I've been a resident of this city for over 20 years now. My husband and I purchased our home a little over 10 years ago. We purchased in the area we did because of the close-knit neighborhood community and the large yards that are great for raising families. Two years ago, everything changed for us when neighbors purchased the home in between our residence and theirs. They turned it into a short-term rental, which has been a long-term nightmare for all of us living around it. It has rented out most of the year with random strangers coming and going daily. It has been the location of a wedding. It has been rented out multiple times as a party house, which is becoming a trend with short-term rentals because it's cheaper than a party room at a commercial location. The owner's ad states no parties are allowed, and yet they still occur and are not stopped. The owner says the penalty is that the renter loses their deposit, yet just furthering their profit while we still get to live through it. They have even left town for the weekend upon arrival of renters to quote them, "We knew we're going to be a problem." I had one of their renters leaning against my home smoking a cigarette when I walked out to take my kids on a bike ride one morning. I had no idea who this man was or where he had come from. It was terrifying. Kids had raced ahead of me while I was locking the door. They were already at the street before I saw him. I was scared to try to get back, get them back inside because he could have gotten to my door before me at that point. I decided to get away from him as quickly as possible. He proceeded to follow me and my children down the street. He didn't stop until he saw me take out my cellphone, which I did to call my husband, who then watched him on our security cameras walk back to the short-term rental behind us. The short-term rental was even rented out for the filming of a movie for over two weeks, along with the owner's own personal residence. They moved during the filming of all of this and left their neighbors to live through the movie hell for over two weeks. We were given zero notice of this and arrived home to over 30 vehicles, massive trailers, and catering vehicles surrounding our home. They would carry on until at least 10:00 PM every night and block access to our home. We and several other neighbors called the police multiple times, and yes, there's records of this. If they showed up, we were told that they could go on until 10:00, according to the noise ordinance. Yet my children are three and five and go to bed at 7:30, and had movie crew members hanging outside their bedroom till almost 10:00 every night for two weeks. outside their bedroom till almost 10:00 every night for two weeks. If the cops showed up to address the parking, they would move vehicles until the cops left and then return to where they were parked. They have even tried, had even tried stopping me from getting home after picking my kids up from school because they were shutting down our street to film. They had zero permits to shut down a street. Like I've already stated, the owners moved out for all of this, leaving us to live in it. The owners have even admitted to renting their short-term rental out to businessmen from Texas for three hours and laughed about it. We can only imagine what went on behind our house for why people needed to rent it for three hours in the day. The last time I messaged one of the owners because of an issue, she texted me the renter's name and said to contact them if I have a problem. Why should it be my responsibility to deal with the customers of their business because it's been referred to several times by their speakers as a business that is operating in our residential-only RS1 neighborhood? Zoning and Planning issued a letter of abatement to the owners of the problematic property in February. They've never ceased rental activity and were granted an appeal for a variance. They then had the first appeal postponed because they were going to be out of town, and now with COVID, it's postponed indefinitely. Meanwhile, even during quarantine, they continue to rent. Short-term rentals are of a transient nature, and we never know who will be next door to us on a day-to-day basis. Occupants are never required to provide any form of identification. Anyone with a credit card can rent them. We are in constant fear for the safety of our children. Furthermore, the short-term rental next to us is less than 300 feet from a middle school. How can it be okay or legal for a business that requires zero identification be allowed anywhere near any school? They could be rented to pedophiles or sex traffickers looking for close access to victims, and no one would have a clue. I hope this is an issue you all take very seriously. I'm asking you all to please consider these issues and the impact short-term rentals can have on our community. Even cities such as New Orleans have realized the perils that short-term rentals can present. They are currently in the process of passing restrictions allowing only occupied, owner-occupied short-term rentals in residential-only areas. We bought a nice home in a residential-only neighborhood. We chose not to live in a commercial area or next door to a hotel. How is our expectation of security and a certain quality of life less important than our neighbors' greedy desire to earn a profit no matter the cost?
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
Our next speaker, 16 speakers left, Kobe Longlinet, followed by Allison Shuffler.
Okay, one second, please.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Cook? You think on there?
Oh, I'm good.
Mr. Lazar?
I can move it after the speakers.
After the speakers.
Okay, okay, go ahead, sir. Oh. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, and I'll be, I'll be brief. This might help out some, some speakers, and I want to say how much I appreciate all the speakers coming, because this is a very, very touchy issue. So we're, you know, we're taking notes, this is introductory, I'm glad we pulled it, because we should have these conversations now as opposed to final adoption. Mr. Ascot, are you there? Back there, I can't see. Okay, correct me if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but, or, and just for a point of clarification, can, if this ordinance were to pass, can neighborhoods initiate building restrictions? For example, homeowners association, could they ban Airbnb, ban short-term rentals if enough petitions are, basically if you file the law under the Civil Code or whatever, via statutes on the, on the state level?
I'm aware of any provision that I can think of of not applying to that. Strictly, I believe, the provision should, in a geographical area of their homeowners association.
So, so said in a non-negative, so, so let me, let me try to...
In other words, they can prohibit them?
Okay. All right, so neighborhoods or certain amount of immovable property, for example, your, owners of immovable property, houses, things like that, if there's enough signatures, and I don't know the law off the top of my head as far as what it is, but it's either in the Civil Code or via statute, somewhere on the state level, there, there are petitions that are available or agreements that are available to prohibit this sort of conduct. So that state law would supersede this ordinance if it were passed, correct?
Well, I'm probably less familiar than you are because I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure if they would have to create an association first, or if there's already a structure in place, a state law that would, like you said, you know, create some geographical area of petition, and then they could prohibit that use. I'm not sure about that.
Because I would say this, if it's not available at the state level, which I'm pretty confident it is, and I don't know the procedural vehicle to get there off the top of my head, but we can, we can find that out so that we can put this out in the public. But if it's not available on the state level, we surely need to amend the ordinance to allow that, that process to be here locally. But I'm pretty confident it's at the state level.
Can we see there?
So, to that point, as I've had three of my HOAs try and ban them from their neighborhoods, and you can certainly put it in your covenants that you do not want to allow them, but historically not held up at the higher courts, unfortunately. I was going to make the request in my speech to city attorney, or Paul, whoever wants to be assigned to that, to triple-check me and the HOAs. They have attorneys that sit on their board, so they should know, but I'd rather double-check because I would love to leave it up to my HOAs to make their own decisions for their own neighborhoods. So if you don't mind, make a note of that for Veronica, to send an email to assign it to someone, and I'd like that information before the next meeting. Thank you. Thank you, and sorry for taking your time, I apologize.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Gillery. My name is Kobe Longlinet. I'm a lifelong resident of Lafayette, a father and a business owner. My wife just spoke, she and I live at 316 Myrtle Place with our two small children. We purchased our home 10 years ago. We've poured countless dollars and countless hours of sweat equity into our home, making it just that, a home, a place to raise our family. We chose to buy where we did, in the Como Place subdivision, because of the neighborhood. We waited to buy until we found a house we wanted on one of Lafayette's most desirable streets. I grew up in what is known as Old Lafayette. I wanted the same experiences for my kids as I had. I wanted to know my neighbors. I wanted big yards and mature trees. I wanted a neighborhood where I could, I knew who lived next door, and I could go across the street and borrow milk or sugar if I had to. I wanted to see kids playing in the yards or riding bikes down big, wide-open streets. We knew that moving into the same streets area, we would have to deal with some renters. We knew that because of its proximity to UL. We both graduated from there. We have actually three renters who live across the street from us that are great neighbors. We don't hear from them, we don't see them. For the last two and a half to three years, we've had, we have endured our neighbor converting his property into a short-term rental. The results have been anything other than neighborly. As my wife said, we've had a party, weddings, landscaping man camp, and numerous guests coming and going. We had an unpermitted movie. We've had guests traveling in from COVID hotspots unchecked. We've tried talking to the owners, we've called the police department, we filed complaints with the city. Parking has been atrocious. We are probably the reason that this amendment is getting added to the UDC. We have had more bad experiences with short-term rentals in a short period of time than probably anyone in the city or parish combined. You will find no one more against this happening in our neighborhood than our group. I'm guilty. I've used it. I've used it in the proper settings. I've used it to go to the beach, to book a unit in a 35-floor, 1,000-room high-rise in Orange Beach. I'm guilty in a business setting, not in a residential neighborhood. Tonight, I am asking you to think of yourselves. Put this situation in your neighborhood, on your street, in your backyard, next door to your house, next door to your daughter, son's, brother's, mother's house. Think of the safety issues that it presents. Think of the liabilities that to you, a next-door neighbor, this presents. Short-term rentals across any platform provide no background checks to any renters staying on the property, nor do they screen any additional guests who might subsequently stay on the property. You, as a neighbor to this, have no way of knowing if the guy staying here is a grade-A citizen or a criminal. The tenant pays online, and boom, here's his online access code to get into the door. If his credit card clears, who cares? There is no process for the owner to screen. I would also ask what the policy is for this specific short-term rental and its proximity to the public school, as my wife mentioned. On the liability side, where is my protection as an adjacent property owner? Are these short-term rental owners carrying the same commercial insurance policies that I carry as a business owner? If the tenant decides to climb the fence and falls into my yard, or climb a tree and break his leg, will their policy cover me? Are they paying commercial property taxes? What does this do to the long-term value of our property and all of the surrounding properties in my neighborhood? There is no protection for me as the guy who lives next door. I basically have zero rights. I thought that by buying in an RS1-zoned area, I wouldn't have to worry about commercial enterprise happening down the street. I thought that meant residential, single-family dwellings, not the comings and goings of a pay-by-the-day operation. Why does the property owner's right to a profit supersede my right as a property owner? Is there no way for me, as a property-owning and tax-paying resident of the city of Lafayette, to have any say as to whether or not I want a business being operated on my street? In closing, I'm asking you to weigh all of the options before making your decision. Do the research as to what is happening and what has happened in other cities. Search your hearts, ask yourself if you would want it in your own backyard. I'm requesting that you pass the amendment as it was handed up from planning and zoning. Owner-occupied properties in RS1 is the only way to make sure what has happened to us doesn't happen to everyone. I know that short-term rental is the craze right now, as I said, I'm guilty of using it myself. But ask yourself this, with over 6,500 available hotel rooms in the parish of Lafayette alone, is there really a need for this in residentially-zoned areas? Where did these people stay before short-term rentals? Thank you for your consideration.
Allison Shuffler, followed by Gordon Shuffler.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Allison Shuffler. I, like the Longlinets, live on the same block as the Airbnb that popped up in our backyard. We have had many, many safety issues. One of the opening things you said in your opening prayer, Nanette, was, "We pray for safety," and I can't express that enough. We have felt extremely unsafe since this Airbnb opened up behind us. I'll give you a couple of examples, in case you need to hear some. And I may get emotional because it involves my young children. I have two daughters, who were nine and six when this shit happened. Sorry, I'm just very, I'm a mama bear, and I'm here to protect my children. We had an Airbnb guest upset that her stay was being disrupted by my two girls playing in the yard, in my yard, in their yard, on their swing set. So she videoed them and took pictures of them and complained to Airbnb that it wasn't, it was disrupting her stay. My children, playing in their own backyard, were disrupting the stay of someone. We, we had another instance where an Airbnb guest got drunk downtown and couldn't find his way back home to the Airbnb behind us, and he came to our house, and he pulled on our front door, which was locked, thank God. And then that didn't work, so he went to our back door and pulled on that one, and he left a bunch of trash on our front porch, and he's lucky that he didn't come into my house, that's all I have to say about that. That's just two things. I can name about 30. I don't have enough time. We filed complaints. My husband's a lawyer, thank God, he's very well-spoken, and he can write really well, and he's written complaints, and they've all been ignored. There was an abatement letter to ask them to stop, and they still keep going. That was issued in February. They're still renting it. We don't know who's coming and going every single night, and we're not the only isolated case. That's what someone told me, "You're an isolated case." No, I'm a red flag, and I'm telling you, you need to be careful before you legalize these. One lady, in, in a Google article, quick Google search if anybody wants to know, says, "New neighbors arrive each day throwing parties, blaring music, disrupting your otherwise tranquil neighborhood." Imagine buying a house and watching an investor snatch up that property next door and list it for rent for Airbnb. That's not living the American dream. That's the other thing someone told me. They're just living the American dream, will do it in a zone where it's legal, like the Longlinets' parents, like my in-laws, like my parents. Open your business where it's zoned, in a commercial or a mixed-use zone, not in my neighborhood. That's not why we bought where we bought, and that's not what is, what other families should have to endure. We are here because we don't want this to happen to other families, and, and the council should take this very seriously, as the Longlinets said. We have 90 people who opposed it because they don't want Airbnb. I wanted to make sure you understood that. We contacted people from all over Lafayette that we knew. They're worried about, "Does my HOA cover me? Will this happen in Bendell? Will this happen around other areas of Lafayette that don't deserve to have this happen in their neighborhood?" Trust me, I can give you several, several reasons why it's not safe. It's, it's been a nightmare. I've prayed about what I was gonna say, I didn't want to sound too emotional about it, but it is an emotional thing for us. The movie, that, that happened too, just like Jeanne and Kobe said. No one gave us notice, no one had a permit. It happened for two weeks. And I'm sorry, I'm emotional, and I'm sorry that I maybe made some of you uncomfortable, but it's an uncomfortable thing for us, and I just hope that you take it seriously. Thank you.
Next speaker, Gordon Shuffler, followed by Anil Patel.
Can I take this thing off to talk? Y'all let me know when I'm, when I'm ready to go.
Tell us your answer and continue.
Good evening, thank you, council members, Mayor Gillery, my name is Gordon Shuffler. I'm here in vehement opposition to this ordinance, this being, ordinance change is happening here tonight or being proposed. My wife, you've just heard from, Allison Shuffler, it is unbelievably hard for me to sit in this room and watch my wife cry in front of this council. I've never spoken to this council before, but I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about something that is so serious for this community, you all need to get on top of it. If you don't believe me, look at what other communities are having to fight with, with this issue. Look at big cities all over the country. San Francisco, the home of Airbnb, has done everything it can to absolutely shut it down. They can't, it's out of control. I live with my wife, my seven-year-old, my 10-year-old daughters, right here in the shadow of this building, 100 Oleander Street. We bought in this neighborhood because I like Old Lafayette. I live a few blocks from my, my office, I live a few blocks from my church. My wife works in Opelousas, it's easy for her to get up on the road. We have a nice neighborhood. We live a few blocks from the bishop. We have nice neighbors, or had nice neighbors. I can tell you all this, my neighbors that are running the Airbnb must have appreciated how nice our neighborhood was, and they made the decision that, hey, we can probably profit off of this. So let's open up an Airbnb in this neighborhood, and let's, let's just let this go crazy. I've heard it said 10 times tonight, how this is a business, how this, these are people operating businesses. That's the problem. It is a business, it's in my backyard, in a single-family residential-zoned area. If I'd have known a motel was gonna pop up in my backyard, I'd have never bought where I bought and sunk hundreds and thousands of dollars into my property. The, the biggest problem I see too is that it popped up with no notice to us, nothing, no chance to be heard, no nothing. The ordinance is before you guys right now, look through it, see if you find any opportunity for a neighbor to speak up and say, "I don't want this." Where's, where's our due process on this issue? Where's our chance to be heard on the issue? If we don't want it, we should be able to say so before it pops up. This is the bird scooters of real estate. This council shut down bird scooters because they popped up and were a problem. They should shut down Airbnb as well for the same reason. Now, like you've heard from my wife, she's got, you know, she talked about the filming, the parties, the, the lady that filmed our children in my own backyard. When I called the police, the police argued with me about whether that was an issue or not. I said, "I don't know, officer, the lady could be a pervert for all I know, but I suspect it was because we were ruining her stay by living in our yard." We filed a complaint with the city back in December. First page of your packet was the city's initial response. It's an abatement letter to my neighbors, telling them to stop this. It's not lawful under our existing zoning. If you do nothing tonight or in two weeks from now, it's... If you do nothing tonight or in two weeks from now, it's still unlawful. It's not a permitted use in this city. Midway through this complaint process, we're now faced with this. The city's looking at changing the playbook and legalizing it. What are we supposed to do with that? Had I known this city could potentially legalize an internet motel in my backyard, I would have never, ever bought here. And candidly, we're shopping for properties outside the parish at the moment. We're...anyway, I'm sorry, guys, I'm very emotional about all of this. This ordinance is an attempt to carve out a niche for people that are just operating on the internet. We already have laws on how bed and breakfasts are supposed to react, how hotels are supposed to act. The only difference between this and those lawful businesses is that they are advertising on the internet, as if that makes it somehow safer. I, for one, don't trust anything off of the internet. So I know this is only an introductory ordinance, but over the next two weeks, you guys are probably gonna hear from people on all sides of this issue. I ask, when you talk to people who are in support of this, ask them questions like, "Are you paying your sales taxes? Do you know who has stayed at your place? Can you identify them? Can you identify who's proposing to stay at your place?" Look in the packet there. There's horror stories from all over this country. I see my time is up. I ask you all to really consider whether you want this in your backyard where you live. And I'll say this, we, in the Longlinays and seven other members, households in our neighborhood, we're here, we're fighting for our homes and our children's. Anybody supporting this thing is fighting for profits, and that's a problem. Thank you all.
Next speaker, Anil Patel, followed by Nelesh Patel. Are they still here, Patels? No?
So the speakers raised really good questions of law, and we have a great Assistant City Parish Attorney that I'd like...I think it would benefit...Paul, I'm putting you on the spot, if you don't know, I'm not gonna hold you against it. Hold it to you. But again, so grateful that we're pulling it on introductory, so we can have these discussions now. Paul, if the council, if we don't act on this, if this ordinance doesn't...can you hear me? If this ordinance does not pass, what are the rules for the Schefflers in that neighborhood? Can these Airbnbs exist? Are there any...is it the Wild West? Do we have any laws governing? I hear laws, I hear there's certain rules, there's no rules.
There's nothing to stop them.
Counselwoman Nakandji, is there anything to stop them? If this ordinance doesn't pass, is there anything that would stop the Airbnbs from being in the neighborhood outside of maybe the suggestion Councilwoman Abar and I had earlier?
Right now, the technical...is this one? Okay. So, right now, the technical answer is that the UDC is silent.
Yeah, the battery might be...
You could come use one of these microphones.
You could go ahead to the front.
Oh, there's another one.
There you go.
Oh, there you go. You could use it in your hand.
So now, can...okay, good. The technical answer to your question is, right now, the UDC is silent on short-term rentals. And so it is subject to interpretation either way. This particular ordinance provides clarity on that issue, right? It provides for the regulation of short-term rentals and defines where and what zones you can or can't have those.
So if this ordinance doesn't pass, then it's...yeah, in RS1, it's the wild, wild west. There's no regulation.
There was...it's currently under review by legal. There was an initial opinion that addressed a specific issue, did not globally address all of the issues that relate to that question. So that's, you know, currently under review. But, like I said, the technical answer right now, without having gotten to the end of the analysis for that, is that technically it's silent, the UDC.
Okay. So if it's silent, and that's the...and if that is the law, and keep in mind, it's our opinion, the city administrator or the legal's opinion. If it is silent, if that is fact, then I would imagine people in neighborhoods would want laws and want rules to regulate. Now, we might need to iron out those wrinkles, you know? So we definitely want rules governing these types of situations. So, again, just thankful that we pulled it out of Englobo, so we can have these discussions. I will tell you this, if it's not settled in two weeks, I would ask that we pull it and figure this stuff out, so that we make sure that we have a good product for our people. That's my take. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try not to interrupt again, but as these legal questions come up, I feel...because it might help some of the other speakers as they come up.
I think that's all speakers, right? Is that all the speakers correct? No, we have some more? Oh, okay, I thought it was here.
We have some.
No problem.
The Patels, I had called for them. Okay, so they're not here. Mark Pritchett. Mark Pritchett. Okay. And he will be followed by Betsy Reschord.
Mark Pritchett, 134 Hillside Drive, also a commissioner on the city planning and zoning commissions. I'm here just speaking for myself, but I can maybe shed a little light on how the commissions came to the decision they did. As we understand it and understood it, the short-term rentals are currently not specifically prohibited or permitted in the UDC. So the amendment that Ms. Liman and the planning and zoning staff put together, spent a lot of work on it, it was an attempt to, as was mentioned before, provide a little clarity on this. As it was written before the commissions made one change to it, it would have permitted short-term rentals in eight out of eleven zoning districts, actually quite liberal as we look back at it. We did have concerns about the RS1 zoning districts, and we discussed what we felt was the fundamental question, and that is, what is appropriate and what is reasonable for homeowners in single-family residential neighborhoods to expect will be permitted in their neighborhood? And just looking at the three words, "single" and "family" and "residential," it kind of provides an answer. There's a pretty loose definition sometimes what a family is, but you can work with that. Single family means one family, not multiple families living in the same residence. And the word "residential" means you reside there. It means it's your home. It doesn't mean you stay there for a night or two. And that was our concern. And I think that for as long as single-family neighborhoods have been recognized by cities all over the country that have tried to come up with reasonable zoning codes for the communities, it's been understood that your neighbors live there, and that when you step out your front door and you see someone next door, across the street, or even behind you, that it's someone you know. Even if they're not the owner of the property, they may be a long-term renter. Maybe they're just there for a year, but still, on a day-to-day basis, you know who's next to you. We felt like that was reasonable. Now, I want to quickly clarify the expression "owner occupied," at least as we understood it from studying efforts by other cities to deal with this issue. And that basically means that the property in question is the primary residence of the owner, and that the short-term rental use of the property involves either an accessory apartment, which is allowed in RS1 neighborhoods, or occasional rental of the main residence. Now, we didn't get into the details of...we've read that other cities limit occasional rentals to ninety nights a year, or something like that. So that's something that can be discussed. But that's what was meant by the term "owner occupied," because, again, if you study what's going on in other communities, you'll find out-of-town and out-of-state businesses buying up residential properties in desirable neighborhoods and renting them remotely. It allows for...not only do the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, have no interaction with the owners, they may not even know who they are. They might not be reachable. And I think we thought, on the commission, that that is something that's reasonable for people who have invested, are paying their mortgages, they're paying their sales taxes, they're raising their families, to expect when they live in a single-family residential neighborhood. So, anyway, I hope that was helpful. Thanks so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Tom.
I have a question for you, sir. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So how are you making a difference? I'm not saying making a difference, but how can you determine the difference between a rental property and a short-term rental?
A short-term rental? That's another thing that, again, would have to be specified in some of the documents we read from other cities. They called anything less than thirty days a short-term rental, and then if it's a month or longer, then it would be considered a normal long-term rental. But that's one of those details that would have to be worked out.
So you guys did take into consideration, when y'all making a decision, about the ones that already been practicing, that's having short-term rental for...they've had a short-term rental for maybe four, five years, that was always a good operator?
I think there's two parts to that question. I think in the ordinance, there's a kind of a grace period, I guess you could call it. I think there's an October date that would allow current operators to continue until that time. And what was the other thing?
Because my question is, again, the ones that been operating short-term rental
Yes, sir.
For quite some time, three, four, five years.
Right.
That always were good operators. How are y'all making a decision with those?
We took the view that despite...and we heard the emotional stories from the Schefflers and the Longlinays, and it was quite heartrending, and that certainly played a part in our decision-making. But we felt that just the reality of unknown people coming and going next door to your single-family residential house was the issue. So in other words, in the hard terms, I guess, like, sorry, you know, even if you're mowing the lawn and your guests are well-behaved and so on, that it's not appropriate for a single-family residential neighborhood. That's it. I should say I'm speaking for myself, but I feel like that was what was behind...
So again, you're speaking for yourself. You're speaking for yourself.
Right, right. I'm not...I can't officially speak on behalf of the commission, but I'm trying to like how we came up.
But you guys did make a decision that owner occupied, that would be the best way to do it. That's the decision we made, so you're speaking not only for yourself, you were speaking for the commission, because y'all making this ordinance, y'all presenting it to us.
Certainly. And I can say that on behalf of those, the way we voted.
But it's just hard for me to understand that a decision can be made, that someone been operating a short-term business for five years, been a good operator, that all of a sudden you want him to disappear.
Yep.
I mean, that's, you know, something...I don't understand that part.
Yep. Well, you know what? I'll just say, in my own neighborhood, both my next-door neighbors have lived there for over fifty years. Fifty years. Like I said before, paying the mortgage, paying the property taxes, raising their family, fifty years. Not a couple of years or five years of making an investment, even with all, you know, friendly behavior and courtesy and all that kind of stuff. I think those people deserve to have what they reasonably felt like they were getting when they bought their homes over fifty years ago. We're gonna live in a neighborhood with people that live in the neighborhood. That's how we looked at it.
So you guys feel the same way, someone not short-term rental, but long-term? Someone just go in a neighborhood, rent a house, purchase a house in the neighborhood that they like or don't like regardless, and rent their home or rent their secondary home for two, three years and can be a bad renter?
Yes. I mean, even a homeowner can be a terrible neighbor, like someone mentioned earlier, certainly. I mean, we couldn't solve all the world's problems.
Well, evidently, y'all solved it. Evidently, y'all solved it, but few.
Well, we did our best.
That's good. Okay.
All right. Thanks, y'all.
Betsy Reschord, followed by Angie Como.
Thank you, Mayor President and Council. It was very disheartening to hear the Longlinays and the Schefflers. And I understand and have great respect for you. On the other hand, I don't own one of these Airbnbs, but I am opposed to the limit of home sharing in residential, single-family zoning district to only owner-own occupancies. I have noticed that these Airbnb properties have been kept up much better than most rental properties and have welcomed many visitors that come to visit family and Lafayette, giving them a real feel for who we are as a people. From what I understand, and now I know of the complaint was made, that would even bring this subject up, the complaint is the same complaint I have made of property owners living in my own neighborhood who have loud parties and do not keep their property up. This, to me, seems lame to choose to limit these owners. It has nothing to do with the Airbnb properties. It has to do with people, with the people that come in, and they should be screened. Airbnb does screen. You can screen, and you can only take five-star people who act correctly. More rental properties are less kept and complained about, and we do not limit them from renting. I am concerned that this limits entrepreneurial ventures in our entrepreneurial city. It limits the amount of visitors that will visit, and now, especially with COVID, it is safer to stay in an Airbnb than in a hotel. It limits our growth as a cultural center, one of only two in our state. It does not align with the values and the vision of our city's growth. We do not want to limit any of our people, and we do not want people to leave well-kept properties in good...and we do not want people to leave well-kept property in good neighborhoods, which will happen if these limits happen. And as Mr. Lewis stated, some of these people have had well-kept properties for many years and no complaints at all. We have no abundance of people looking to rent right now in Lafayette. And to satisfy income for our city, we must think forward. Airbnb is now and will become bigger in the future. I would be embarrassed, as Lafayette resident, to say we have limited this, because the need remains for people to stay at Airbnbs in our area. Thank you for your time and for your consideration.
Next speaker, Angie Como, followed by Erin Bass.
Good evening. Thank you for the late hour. My name is Angie Como. We have been operating Airbnb for the last year and a half here in Lafayette, and we chose to do that instead of long-term rental, because I'm a control freak and I would have more control over who was staying there, because we do screen people, we do require government ID, and Airbnb has all that set up. If you look online, I know most of y'all have rented before through Airbnb. So we are zoned in RS1. I believe that myself and others who have entire homes with yards and private outdoor spaces available for families and groups traveling together offer a unique asset for tourists visiting Lafayette. I just wanted to read two, and thank you again for your time, two public reviews for our Airbnb pertaining to family specifically. The first is from Elizabeth. She and her husband Drew lived here. She and her husband Drew lived here in Lafayette and came back for a wedding. Anyway, Elizabeth said, "This place is amazing, a whole house to ourselves for a great price and so close to everything we love in Lafayette. The layout was perfect for our family. We had grandparents on one end of the house with their own bathroom and grandkids on the other. The kitchen and living spaces were open so we could all spend time together. The front and backyards were lovely spaces. The house was spotless." Anyway, the second is from Mark, who's from France. We have lots of international families that travel together and come in and stay as a group. He said, "We had a great, excellent stay at Angie and Andre's. The house is perfect, very clean, well-equipped. The kids love seeing the squirrels in the morning in the garden," which made us feel good. Because I think so many people want that. I know a lot of y'all stay in Airbnbs, and I think you all received a letter from one of our neighbors who lives, his daughter and his grandkids live next door to us. He actually has several long-term rentals in the area, and he is in full support of us and said if he ever had a problem, he would definitely come to y'all or call the police or take the necessary steps. But he has not. So I encourage you to read some of the reviews from the guests describing their experiences and describing, you know, their stays in Lafayette. If owner occupancy becomes a requirement, we would be out of business. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Erin Bass, followed by Frances, I think that's Porcy?
Okay, I'll be brief as well. So I have an Airbnb. It's a three-bedroom, two-bath, and it's right next door to my house. The backyards connect, so it's very close. And our story is that it was basically the worst rental house on the block. It was falling down, the rodents from that house were coming to my house, and so when we got the opportunity to purchase it, we did, but we didn't want to do another long-term rental. We spent two years renovating the property, keeping as much of the original wood and floors and everything as we could. And we wanted to do short-term rental because my in-laws live in Texas, and so they want to be able to come visit and stay there when they come. And then we just wanted, like Angie said, we wanted to be able to control who was there, who's there when, and, you know, if there's a problem, you can ask someone to leave. You're not stuck with this long-term rental house next to you. So that's kind of, that's kind of what our story is. And so our, we actually checked on this number today. Our property value has increased over 200% at that house since we purchased it in 2015. And so we live right next door with our four-year-old daughter, like I said, and we just really enjoyed hosting guests from all over the world. We have a lot of repeat guests. We have the same family from Austin that stays with us each year for Mardi Gras. And so we also provide tons of books about Lafayette and Louisiana. We have brochures. We have a list of all the downtown restaurants, shops, things we recommend, and we even have a record player with local records. So we just try to provide a wonderful experience for our guests, and it's been a great experience for us. I'm sorry it has not been for everyone, but from our perspective, it's good for Lafayette, it's good for business, it's good for tourism. So thanks for your time.
Frances Pavi, followed by Jessica Haypat.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, having us. I have a property in Freetown that I've owned for forty years. It's a commercial, it's a zone residential, but I've been grandfathered in. It's always been a commercial property. So they wouldn't grant me mixed use when they redid the code. So, but I still have my grandfather designation of the property. So, and I've had, I've lived there for a while, have an apartment. I did long-term leasing, rental for a long time and for probably fifteen years and decided since my friends are doing Airbnb, I'd try it. And it's been much, it's been a lot, my short-term rental has been a boon over the long-term rental. The rent, the people that come are kind and considerate, I can vet them, I can look on Airbnb and see what kind of ratings they have. I've actually reported people that I thought they were, they were trying to scam me or if they had bad ratings, I, you know, refused to rent to them. So you can vet these people. I care about my neighbors. All my neighbors are, there's never been any problems with over the 300 people I've hosted, and I'm lucky to be able to have been designated as super hosts since the four or five years I've been doing it. So it's been a positive experience for me, and I would think for my neighbors because nobody's ever complained to me. Never had a party, never had anybody complain to me about my Airbnb guests. And my commercial, my property, like I said, is a, I pay commercial property tax, I pay commercial utilities, I pay anything that, I pay commercial insurance. I have a certificate of occupancy. I'm there every day because it's my studio. Although I don't live there, I live on University, and if this requirement to be onsite and live on the premises, it would derail my, this little, my short-term rental, which actually helps me defray costs for insurance and utilities and things like that. I really do, I have had great experiences with the people from all over the, all over the world, a lot of Australians, in fact, more than anything, more than any other country, mostly families. Some people on business trips, you know, for a day or two, get to use the apartment when half the time, it's not always rented out. And I just wanted to, I'm very, I would very much like to say that the, I believe in the code. This new amendment is good except for the, for the requirement to live on your property. So that's about all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions if y'all have anything to say.
Next speaker is Jessica Haypat.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, council members, Mayor, President, Josh. I don't own property. I'm a millennial. I buy too much avocado toast. I may never own a house in my lifetime, but I, and I'm not even originally from Louisiana. I was born and raised in Arizona. I moved to Louisiana to go to law school at LSU. I needed a law school with a good football team. I moved to Lafayette because that's where the job was. I'm like, well, as long as I'm in South Louisiana, that's what matters to me. My mom has not been to Lafayette yet, and I would love for her to come visit me. She was scheduled to come in March because she loves the crawfish, but COVID happened. Story of our lives, right? There are, I think someone said there are 6,500 hotel rooms available in Lafayette right now. I don't want my mom staying at any of them. None of them are close to where my apartment is. None of them offer the comforts of a home, and I live in a small apartment. I'd love to be able to go chill out with her and watch movies all day without worrying about her criticizing how clean my apartment is. I think the tax boon available to, the tax credits that are going to be generated by short-term rentals will help our community to grow and flourish. And I also recognize that Airbnbs are more affordable than your traditional hotel room. And I don't think that people's economics means should prohibit them from being able to visit Lafayette and experience this lovely city that I have fallen in love with. Let's see. I would like to recognize that I'm in favor of the ordinance without the owner occupancy stipulation, and I just really hope that Lafayette can be a successful Airbnb town the way so many other towns have been. Thank you so much for your time. Stay safe, y'all.
Call the first speaker. He might be sleeping, but.
Good evening, sir, and sirs, and ma'ams. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to y'all from the safety of my home. I'm a sixty-five-year-old retired housing counselor who used to work for Lafayette Consolidated Government. I worked twelve years to try to help people find a place to live because a lot of our community doesn't have a good, safe place to live. And I believe that everyone should have the opportunity to rent housing that they can afford, that they want, and that they can be comfortable with. I provide housing to about five families. They're all single families. I live in Riversdale subdivision. I own a Bed and Breakfast. It's across the street from my home. I've been renting it out for two years as a Bed and Breakfast. The home has been remodeled. It now looks good from the street. It has a nice appearance, and I have people that come from mostly Texas, Alabama, Georgia, and they come here for weddings and graduations and things like that. Haven't had any kind of problem with any of these people. And I do have rental houses that are long-term rental, and I have made less money from them, and I've had to spend more money trying to keep them up, and have not had the good experience on long-term rental that I've had on short-term rental. I would like for y'all all to consider, please, not spicing a community growth at a bad period of time, because the people come here and they come back. And I think it's a really, really positive face on lodging in Louisiana. And I know that I have quite a few thousand dollars in these homes, and I made a significant investment in this community, I live here thirty-two years ago, and I've tried to serve people in this community who have not been served properly. And I try to do things right, and I think I've found the home, and since that point in time, I've moved my sister, my brother-in-law, my first cousin, and everybody in Lafayette. And the reason they came was because our people, our people are decent, and they want to put their best foot forward and help people. I'm sorry for the results that the people had with a bad neighborhood, but if someone's breaking the law, the law will take care of them. I've had great luck with the police whenever I needed them for anything here in Lafayette, and I don't think that short-term rentals are a problem. I think people are afraid of it. And when you work in the housing industry, there's a word called NIMBY. It means not in my backyard. And I think we don't need to be fearful of that. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Parkinson. Ms. Minor, you may begin speaking.
Hi there. I'll be brief. I, my husband and I have operated both long-term and short-term rentals, mostly in La Pla neighborhood for the last five years. I would agree that there are certain neighborhoods that maybe are not as conducive to Airbnb and short-term rental, ones that are historically single-family homes, larger homes that do not have duplexes in the neighborhood, such as neighborhoods like Freetown, La Pla, St. Street, Nickerson, Sterling Grove, areas of Okalon. These are all neighborhoods which already have cottages and backyards, duplexes, threeplexes, et cetera. So I'm wondering if we could, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm hearing reverb. I'm gonna have to step aside here. Anyway, I'm wondering if there couldn't be a compromise? Maybe certain neighborhoods should be favored for this more than others because they're already conducive to hosting, you know, short-term and rental properties. We have had, like the other speakers have said, we have never had any complaints from neighbors. In fact, our properties are known as the best ones on the block because we take a lot of pride in where we live and in our rental properties. So could we think of a compromise? Maybe there is one where if you are already operating, like some of the people who have spoken, they're in single-family neighborhoods already, maybe, you know, those people register their property, and if there are complaints, then address them as they come. But if it's working, don't stop the people who are being successful and who are being responsible, just for those that are not following the rules and not being considerate. Thank you.
Next speaker is Kenneth Ritter. Mr. Ritter, you may begin speaking.
Yes, I just wanted to comment regarding the short-term rentals. I really enjoy using short-term rentals, and it's, that's what, that's what, that's the kind of place I like to stay. And I don't, I don't think that it's, I don't think not allowing people to stay in short-term rentals is a just idea to do, because I don't want to stay in hotels, especially not now. That's all, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You want to speak now?
I'm gonna wait until the public.
Okay, so Ben Bertha-Lott, he did leave his number with the LCBC, if, only if you had questions for him. Bob Hammack, he called in but didn't, not wish to speak or changed his mind. He's in opposition to the proposal, and.
I have a question for Ben.
Excuse me?
I have a question for Ben.
For Ben, okay. And the final speaker prior to Ben will be Tyler. Tyler, you'll have to say your last name. You could come on up.
How y'all doing? My name is Tyler Albrecht. I live in Freetown, and I want to first say I've heard everyone here today, and to the Longlinays and to the Sheffs, I feel for you. I hear your experiences and your concern, both for your home, your way of life, and your family. I'm very sorry for the situation you're in, and I don't blame you for taking the action. You are, because it sounds like you've tried every other route and you have no other recourse. However, I've lived in Freetown for the last twelve years. I went to school here. I was born here. My mom's from St. Marville, but I grew up in New Orleans, came back here and went to university, played football. I love Freetown. I've been here for twelve years, and since I got here, I've tried to better the community. I love the momentum that's happening in downtown, St. Streets, and everything that's growing for our city's core. I love my neighbors. I love my neighbors, and I've done my best to be a good neighbor to them and to brighten our community with a lot of improvements to my property and the surrounding properties. I recently made a substantial investment behind my house in Freetown, and I built a tiny house called the Freetown Flat from the ground up. It's a two-bed, two-bath structure upstairs with a garage in the bottom. We started renting it out short-term on Airbnb, starting in May. I had a terrible first experience with my first guest, and at that point, I had to rethink my approval process. After that experience, I made sure to vet my short-term tenants harder, the same way I do my long-term tenants. I own seven different properties here in Acadiana that I ran out long-term. Now, before approving my guest, Airbnb does verify people and their identity. I personally make sure that they will take care of my brand-new home, do not disrupt my neighbors. I read the reviews, I speak to them, and I set expectations. No parties, no smoking, no pets. I love my neighbors and want to do nothing to upset them. My Airbnb is a legitimate business and has helped me through some tough times during the global pandemic. As a business, I do carry insurance, and it's accurate to the use of the property, and we do pay taxes. It's not only a business for me, it's also a cultural center for Acadiana. I'm providing a beautiful space for visitors to experience Acadiana properly. We even partnered with a local nonprofit called the Lafayette Community Library. It provides free instrument rentals for anyone who holds a library card. We now have implemented some of those instruments into the flat to encourage musicianship here in Acadiana. I've been able to donate to good causes downtown, like sponsoring Wing Fingers and the Chicken Sandwich Cook-Off. No hotel was listed as sponsoring this local event, and I plan to do more sponsorship. And I'm happy for the ability to donate money to causes like this. I'm a Realtor locally, and I can tell you when properties are kept up, in the fashion that I keep my properties up, home values are either unaffected or they increase. There's a lot of different factors that go into home values, and property use is very low on the totem pole. The biggest taxi service in the world is Uber. They own no cars. The largest short-term rental service owns no houses. You can't fight progress. I urge the council to not fight progress as well. I use Airbnb when I travel. I love it. You get a better experience, more personalized. It's usually for a better price. We use it several times when we go, you know, Colorado or the beach, wherever we go, and we have wonderful experiences. However, I've heard the concerns. I do understand my neighbors who live in the shadow of this building are hurting, and I feel for you. I want to help you, and I want to help to find a diplomatic solution. It seems like this entire situation has occurred because of one bad operator out of hundreds that are operating in the city. There has to be some kind of compromise. I don't know what it is, but Josh made a good point. Maybe it's something you can include in a neighborhood's HOA, or something that's a little less drastic than blanketly putting regulations on all zones and all Airbnbs. A lot of people, including myself, rely on the income from these Airbnbs to live, and I think it's a valid business that's not going away anytime soon. So I think we need to find a solution that works for everybody. Thank y'all for your time.
On the phone, we have Ben Bertha Lot with the Lafayette Convention and Visitors Commission. Ben, if you could walk away from the sound of your television, we're getting feedback. Councilmember Pat Lewis has a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How you doing, Ben? Good night or good evening?
I'm doing great.
Okay, good. My question to you would be, being here to lead up tourism in the city of Lafayette. And I know you travel a lot, or you hear a lot from different tourism directors in the state of Louisiana, probably abroad. How would you rate the Airbnb concerning safety?
Okay, I'm having a hard time hearing the question.
He asks, how would you rate Airbnb's as it relates to safety, being you're familiar with them?
Okay, just a couple of comments. I just want to say, our involvement with this issue has been largely on the taxation side. That began over two years ago. From a fairness and equity standpoint, we were able to broker a voluntary collection agreement with Airbnb that was signed by the Sales Tax Collection Office in October of 2018, that now Airbnb's are, Airbnb is paying, permitting taxes, not just occupancy tax, but also local sales tax on behalf of its host. And so I just wanted to mention that, that's been since October of 18. There was a bill in the legislature this past session that addressed short-term rentals as a whole, and so that was signed by the governor, and now all Airbnb properties are remitting taxes, or will be remitting taxes, on behalf of their host, as well as any other short-term rentals other than Airbnb. In terms of the safety issue, I will say we have not heard any, I have not heard any complaints to our office in the last eight years in regard to Airbnb. I do believe, I was not aware of this ordinance until a couple of weeks ago, and I've had the opportunity to meet with the planning department, with Airbnb hosts, and with the Hotel Motel Association. The Hotel Motel Association does have some concerns, given the current economic climate in terms of regulation, and I believe they're willing to work with the planning department on those regulations. But I will say that I thought it was a very proactive move by the planning department and the administration to bring this ordinance forward, because prior to this ordinance, we had no way of knowing, and we still have no way of knowing, where any of these Airbnb properties are. So I brought this before our board. There was very little discussion because we felt like it was a step in the right direction in terms of at least being able to identify where these properties are. And so I do believe there's a little bit of misinformation out there. To me, if you're against the ordinance, then that would mean that you're, you're for Airbnb is not even being acknowledged or recognized. So as the Mayor President stated earlier, his comments echo by your counsel. I think this is a step in the right direction in terms of knowing where these properties are and being able to mandate that they get a certificate of occupancy, which, to my understanding and meeting with the Airbnb owners, they're agreeable to. So I know I answered a lot more than your question, but I hope that helps.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other council questions for Ben? No, Ben, that's it. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. No other speakers. Mr. Chair.
Ms. Ebert.
Thank you, Chairman. So lots of great information tonight. What I'm, what I'm hearing is that it sounds like this is a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. I'm thrilled that the planning and development team has recognized that we do need to come up with some standard, whether it's abandoning them all, or coming up with conditions, or what they proposed, or maybe what the commission proposed. I do not, I'm certainly not a fan, I'm not a fan of overregulation, but I do believe that we need to have rules in place to protect the people, protect the neighbors who maybe are, like the neighbors here tonight, that are facing the situation, even after doing everything they were supposed to do. But I also don't want to punish the good Airbnb owners who are doing all the right things and not having the complaints. So I'm not going to propose anything tonight, but I would like to work with planning and development on maybe an amendment. Some of the things that I'm considering is having rules in place similar to the bed-and-breakfast rules, where they would have to get the CO. I'm not as concerned about the, the you must live onsite, because that's not going to solve the problem we have here, because they live next door, they live in the house that they also rented out. So that's not going to solve the issue at hand. That's only going to, again, punish people who are doing all the right things. So I'm not concerned about that, but I do want to form some sort of two or three strikes you're out if you do not follow these rules, if the cops are called, and, you know, they're filming your children, or they're having parties all end of the night, or whatever these, these rules are. And the rules are going to be clear and precise to where everyone understands the rules, so there's no surprises. I definitely want to have a process in place on our end, and I say our end, planning and developments end, so they know how to handle this process whenever their complaints do start coming to them. I like the idea that you have to, if you are a bed-and-breakfast neighbor, then you would have to send a letter out to your neighbors explaining that you are bed-and-breakfast. Here's a number to contact if you are having issues, so they can reach out, and exactly what the violations are under the new regulations. And then legal, I already mentioned this, is I want to find out if HOAs can take it upon themselves to ban it from a neighborhood. So we'll be waiting on that information. So, so that is my proposal. So I guess we'll work together with planning and development and legal to work on that. And fellow council members, I welcome any suggestions that you have, or any comments you have between now and then. Thank you.
Yes, to echo what you're saying, I did speak with some of the people that are here today, and I did mention to them that I was not in favor of having someone live on the premises. And I had a conversation with Ms. Mary, also in the director of planning zoning, and I also spoke with the legal and the Madam Chair, I mean, Council Clerk, that I'm planning on having an amendment dealing with that. And as far as what they have just brought to the attention of, to the council, some of the amendments that the planning zoning has brought forth, and also the commissioner, I agree with just about all of them they have, have brought to our attention, except the one on owner occupied. Again, as I stated earlier, I don't think we should punish the ones that have been some good operators for the last few years, maybe 10 years, and never had complaints. And I do feel for the people that were talking today. But again, just by having owner occupied will not solve the problem like Ms. Ebert said. It's moving forward. I have no problem with perhaps entertaining the idea of having all Airbnbs in mixed-use neighborhood, if we can put that as an amendment, to move forward. But those that are there now, I feel they should remain Airbnb as of now, more or less like a grandfather then, because we have over 300, again, over 300 Airbnbs. And out of the 300, that's my first complaint. And I've been known about Airbnb for about 10 years. Only had one complaint. So why should we punish 300 or more for one complaint? I know every life is valuable. I understand that. Every life is valuable. But again, we have good operators here, and most of the ones that operate these Airbnbs live in the neighborhood. You might have a few that live maybe a mile or two away, but they're citizens of Lafayette, mostly all of them. You may have a few that have, live somewhere in another state, but I guarantee someone is taking care of their property. That's better than long-term rental. You know the process to have someone evicted for long-term rental? It's a healthy, it's a long process. Short-term, have to deal with them for maybe 48 hours, and that's it. I mean, I'm not being funny, but really, it's not that long. Then you have a new one come in. Okay, Mr. Mayor President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just echo what both of you said. And this is my challenge to our residents that showed up, and I echo your feelings as far as what you guys have gone through. I mean, it sounds like hell on earth, okay? And my heart goes out to you. Right now, there is no law. This ordinance has not passed, and that bed-and-breakfast, or that BNB exists without any regulations. We're trying to put regulations, put rules to prevent some of those behaviors. Now, it doesn't seem like the ordinance that's proposed addresses every concern, so that's my concern with this. That's okay. That's why we're having discussions. This is transparency. This is good. So my request, and we have our director back there, the next two weeks, we're going to work with the council. We're going to hear everything. You know, you guys represent your constituents. You put forth your thoughts. Citizens, reach out to Mary Sloman. Look, let's, let's hear the feedback. But let's be very specific, and my, my approach, and I'm putting my family law attorney hat on, back when I would sit down and mediate, I would say, okay, let's not talk about labels or, you know, let's talk about concerns, and how do we address those concerns? And that's what we're talking about here. You bring very valid concerns, and I don't know if there's answers to everything, and maybe, maybe there's not. Maybe the answer is improving our policing in that area. I don't know that answer, but I know there's a solution out there. And I know we can't fix a problem if we don't identify it. So you've at minimum identified some very valid concerns. So let's work with the director. Let's get these concerns addressed, identified, or, excuse me, identified, then addressed, and do, and do everything we can to continue to look at this, because as, as the chair said, we may have to amend this again in the future, and that's okay. That's why we have this process. But the way I look at it right now is, that problem exists without this ordinance. This ordinance, I know the intent behind it. It's to address the situation and get some kind of rules there. So the more bomb we have with the community, the better. I welcome that. And, you know, that's, that's all I have.
Gotta start somewhere.
Gotta start somewhere.
Ms. Cook.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
Oh, well, good night.
I was going to say, I mean, this is a start. We need to regulate, and this is where we are. We need to figure out where they all are. I mean, we have 300, but we don't really know all the locations. So once we can do that, once we identify those things in particular locations and understand how many we exactly have, then, you know, the information that we're getting from all of you, we need that. We need all that information so we know what our next step needs to be. So, you know, exactly what the mayor just said, we, this is our first step, and I think it's, it's a good step, considering that we had nothing in place before. So I support the moving forward with it and putting the regulations and, and just, you know, parameters, and just understanding where we are with it, with, you know, moving forward. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, so we did the council discussion, public comments. Then now we have to vote for council to introduce the ordinance.
District 5.
Yes.
District 1.
Yes.
District 2.
Yes.
District 3.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
The motion to introduce is approved.
Join the city council meeting.